Good afternoon, all. I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair, and this administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 4:00 PM on this 13th day of December 2022. As always, members of the public will be able to observe this meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VVTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. And we do welcome and thank those who have joined us today, both in person and online. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please announce the School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. President of the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab is Chair Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Okay, admin matters and reports. Before we get into what's officially scheduled, does anybody have any admin matter? I do. Mrs. Melnick?
So I just wanted to take a moment to thank Distribution Services Facility and Maintenance, the Department of Technology, and the city's Communication Department, and everyone that was involved in moving the Division, the SAB, to the Holland Road Annex. It was seamless, and everything looks beautiful. I walked around yesterday, and it even looks like a school again in here. It's great. And so, thank you to everyone who had a part in that. Most importantly, though, everyone knows I have a blanket because it's always cold. And yesterday, when I walked into that room, my blanket was folded over the back of my chair, so that made it in the move, too. And I thought that was really special. So, thank you to everyone. Thank you, Dr. Spence.
Okay.
Oh, wait, Mrs. Hughes. Yeah, I don't... No, I can save this for later.
All right, so we begin with what traditionally is on the agenda for each December. For those members who wish to do so today, who are entertaining possible School Board leadership interests, this is your opportunity if you want to so-state today. Mrs. Riggs?
Okay, I'm not one to talk about myself, but I will talk about leadership. So, good leader is dedicated to bringing out the best abilities in everyone and motivate them to work together, which, so we can achieve shared goals. Good leaders also organize and keeps the team on track and focused to avoid unnecessary delays. I've done that in several leadership roles I've served in the past. And the right leadership brings coordination among the group, which helps in effective work and attainment of organizational goals. Leadership also acts as motivational tool for showing the right path and bringing confidence to the rest of the board. I feel I could do that. Helps in attaining better relationships among the members, and I think we need that. Good leaders possess self-awareness, they garner credibility, and they focus on relationship building. They have a bias for action, exhibit humility, and empower others. They stay authentic, present themselves as constant and consistent. I feel like I've done that. I think people that know me know that I do that. And they become role models and are fully present. So, these are the qualities I feel like I have as a leader, and so I'm putting my name in there for the Chair of the School Board for the upcoming year.
Before I entertain others, I just, for the benefit of the public, want to put out the reminder, there are formal nominations and voting takes place at the January Organization Meeting. So with that, Mrs. Weems?
Yes, thank you. I will be running for Chair as well, and I will be contacting all my colleagues in the next week to have personal 1-on-1 chats with everybody. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Melnick?
And I'm willing to serve in the same role if necessary.
Anybody else? That wraps it up for now. And again, it's not mandatory to speak today, but we will now go on to schedule of meetings for the remainder of this school year and proposed for fiscal year 2024. So if you'll take a moment to pull out, if you haven't done so already, single sheet prepared by Madam Clerk. Schedule of School Board meetings is, in red, a draft, kind of the same format you would see on the SharePoint site. I'll quickly go through it, again, to serve as a reminder that comments or thoughts will be entertained today, that this is scheduled for approval, whatever draft ultimately is developed, would be approved also at the January Organization Meeting. That's standard as well. So, Madam Clerk, refresh my memory with regard to what remains for this calendar year. Are there any modifications to what presently is posted?
There are no modifications, just to point out that due to the spring holiday on April 4th through April, April 10th through April 14th, your March 28th meeting, the week right is, so you're having two back-to-back meetings on March 28th and then again on April 4th. So just as a reminder of that, due to the spring break.
Thank you. So, to run through again, the two January meetings are noted, and again, as has been mentioned already, with the first being the Annual Organization Meeting. The February meetings, every Tuesday, is on the calendar. The regularly scheduled meetings are the 14th and 28th, with additional meetings on the 7th and 21st, but every one of those four weeks will have the traditional budget component for the leading up to adoption, the special meeting to adopt the budget on March 7th. And then, again, March defaults to the 2nd and 4th Tuesday. And Ms. Regina just pointed out again about April 4th and the 25th, and the reason for that gap, the spring holiday in between. Then you see your two May dates, again, 2nd and 4th, and the June 6th special meeting, Superintendent Evaluation, that has been shared with you all months earlier, and Graduation Week being June 13th through 16th. So there again is that Monday meeting on June 12th, and I'm sure as that date approaches, the Board and Administration will do their due diligence to be sure the public is aware of that. Yes, ma'am.
In June, it looks like, okay, we have the special meeting because on June 6th, and then you pointed out June 12th, but June 6th is a special meeting for the Superintendent's Evaluation. Is there no other regular School Board meeting in June?
The June 12th and 27th are listed below.
I don't see the 27th online. Oh, okay, I see. It's right next to it. Thank you.
No, appreciate the question. Anything else with that six-month period? All right, so then, this again is proposed for July through June, and you'll have time to think about it, too, between now and January. But the retreat date, which was announced a month or so ago, is Monday and Tuesday, July 10th and 11th, and that comes with an associated abridged regular meeting, which is typical. And then July 25th is listed as the 2nd July meeting. Then there's the two in August, again, 2nd and 4th Tuesday, the same with September and October and November. And then a single meeting in December, just like this year. And then you can see for yourselves the two meetings in that January, which again would be the Organizational Meeting and the 23rd, and then your series of Budget Meetings in February with the Special Meeting for Budget Adoption, the first, that March 5th, and then the two remaining dates in March and April, May. And there again, June, already have proposed a Superintendent Evaluation Special Meeting, and again, a Monday for that first June meeting to allow for graduations on June 25th. So any questions at this point on this proposal? Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, just a quick question. I may recall differently, but do we have two public hearings for the budget? I thought we had two public hearings. There's only one listed. Do we normally have two? Ms. Pate?
We will have budget workshops every week during February.
Okay, thank you.
But I think your point is like today's a public hearing, so maybe we can ask that that be added to this. So, Madam Clerk, to note, the corresponding date for next December as also as a hearing interweaved in the actual regular meeting.
Thank you.
All right, sum all this over. Probably questions or follow-up questions would be appreciated in advance, I'm presuming, with the Administration in this new year before the, and with the Clerk before the Organization Meeting. So thank you. Okay, Dr. Spence, the quarterly report for the 1st of 2023.
Yes, ma'am. So this is the quarterly forecast for the third quarter of this school year, and we'll start on January the 10th. You all should have this in front of you. It's also on the screen. Just a reminder, this is a living document. This is our first look at what we forecast based on conversations with the Board and items that we know will come up periodically, some on an annual basis. And then, of course, if you have questions about what's on there or any additions that need to be added, we would certainly solicit those at this time, and then also, because it's part of what guides our agenda planning process, that again can be a living and ongoing conversation. So with that, I'll mention the first meeting in January. Right now, we have two workshops on there. We have HR's Annual Recruitment Staffing and Retention Update, and then a short introduction to a potential childcare program that we'd like to have a conversation with the School Board about. And then you can see what's on the action agenda there, a lot of which will be devoted to Board organizational matters in that first meeting in January. For the 24th, the workshops that we're recommending is an update on Compass to 2025. That's the Division Strategic Plan. Also, compensation update from our HR team, continuing that discussion with the Board as we head into the budget development and adoption season. And you'll note on the 24th, we've got a closed session intended for Superintendent's Midyear You'll see under Information, some of the annual and monthly things that come up with the interim financials, the annual Comprehensive Finance Report, used to be called the Comprehensive Annual Finance Report, we've changed that, it's now ACFR instead of CAFR, in case you were curious what that was. And you can see under Consent and Action, a couple of Board items that need to be taken care of there, and then some resolutions. We do have a special meeting, as was just discussed, on February the 7th. As you all recall, that's typically a short meeting. It's not a comment, a public comment meeting. It's just the presentation of the Estimate of Needs, as well as the Capital Improvement Program that allows us to kick off the budget workshop and hearing season, which will begin in earnest on February the 14th with the first budget workshop, as well as a Title IX update from our docile team and a public hearing on the budget. And then you see our consent and action, just a couple of things that we anticipate coming up for your consideration. Then on the 21st, another special meeting, another second workshop on the budget in CIP. And then on the 28th, we will have another workshop on the budget, as well as an overview of behavior, response, and support through our docile and detail teams. And HR will be coming back to the Board with an overview of the Enhanced Employee Input Process and how that's been going. You can see again, kind of rotating information there for the 28th, and then some resolutions in the personal report right now is all we have for action. And then on the 14th, we will have two workshops, one on our Avid Program and how that's going and its expansion, as well as an update from the Mental Health Task Force. And you'll also see again, sort of the standard consent action items. And then the final meeting that's listed here is the March 28th meeting, which would include the fourth quarter forecast, an update on our website, which is being overhauled. That'll come from our DCC E team. We know many of you want to talk more about high school scheduling, so we have pushed that in there. We think that's about the right time to have a conversation based on both some tweaks that we're making to the scheduling process for the second term, as well as giving us enough time to make any adjustments that we need to make after a conversation with the Board prior to our schedulers really getting deeply involved into their data in the spring. And we do want to come back to you in the spring and talk to you about the high school transportation hours, not the high school, excuse me, just school hours in general based on transportation. As the Board knows, we've made some adjustments to that based on staffing issues with our bus drivers. We feel like we can come back and revisit that with you and think the spring will be the right time to do that. And again, just some rotating items and information and consent. So, that's it for the third quarter forecast. Any questions for me or for staff?
Red and green for Christmas, okay.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Spence, I'm assuming the recovery high school update is not listed on here because we're still waiting, and we don't know when we're going to hear about the grant and the funding from the state. Is that correct? And once we hear, it'll scoot in there somewhere?
Yes, ma'am. Once we have a better sense of where that is, we'll certainly bring it back for conversation with the Board.
And something that came up in agenda planning, and I've spoken with Ms. Owens, who's one of our two members, Mrs. Franklin being the other, who've been working and pressing forward on this, a School Board Student Representative. And so, some information was shared by them at the last meeting, and it looks like, you know, they're reaching a point where they'll be able to come forward with a recommendation, having spoken with staff and VSBA and others. So, just asking Administration to consider adding it as a workshop item for the first quarter, or if it has to be in the beginning of the second quarter, but just to state for the record that this will continue to move forward. And I'll say just our thanks on behalf of the full Board to both of you for the time you've put into researching this matter. Anybody else before we move ahead? All right then, we're ready to begin our single presentation of this workshop, and I think we're going to have to start with Ms. Woodhouse, our Chief HR Officer, who will introduce our special guests.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. Today, we are here to present the findings from the Compensation Market Study conducted by our consultants from Siegel. As a refresher, on July 19th, 2022, the Board met with Siegel to continue the review of the Board's Compensation Philosophy and garner information regarding the directive of the Board would like to see and to have take place around competitiveness of the Division's Compensation Pay Scales. With your guidance and input, the Compensation Philosophy was updated and approved by the Board in September. As part of reviewing our pay scales in relation to the market, Siegel continued its work with the Division to distribute an anonymous web-based employee compensation opinion survey, which was completed in May of this year. The results of that survey were shared with the Board in July. With the completion of the Compensation Philosophy and the opinion survey, the Division was set to move forward with Siegel implementing the market study, which we worked collaboratively on throughout the process. So today, to present this information, we have returning with us Dr. Paula Singer, who holds the position of Vice President at Siegel. She comes to us with over 30 years of experience in the field of compensation, staffing, as well as other areas. Sharing the podium with Dr. Singer tonight will be Mr. Michael Conway, who works as an Associate Consultant with Siegel and has a background in compensation and statistical analysis. And so, without further ado, I give you Dr. Singer.
And this is Michael Conway, who I'd like all of you to meet. He worked very hard as a member of the team of the four of us and is here to present today as well. Fred could not join us, but the two of us will cover everything. So, are you going to sit there? Okay. Okay, we're working out the kinks. I described the room perfectly, not knowing we weren't meeting here at the time, the other room. So I'm delighted to be here. And to give you the update, it was so good that Mrs. Woodhouse mentioned the prior times you were here, because what Michael and I have done is build on that meeting, built on what you said in terms of the comp philosophy, in terms of what we learned from the employee communications, and could put that into the base of the program that we've created. So what we're going to do today is talk both about the Unified Pay Scale and the Teachers' Pay Scale and our assessment. We'd like to ask you to hold your questions. I know we haven't done it this way in the past, but hold your questions to the end, so take notes. We're going to start with the Unified Pay Scale and then go into the teachers. So I want to bring us back to where we started, which is where we started also on the Compensation Philosophy. It's all about Compass to 2025. And the goal was, I think it was Goal Four, VBCPS places a priority on recruiting, retaining, and promoting a workforce representative of our diverse population. That's where we started with the comp philosophy, and that's what our work has taken us to do. So our goals for this project became, first, to measure where salaries are in relation to the market, and for both the teaching and the non-teaching workforce. Second, to understand your relationship of how you are paying your employees as compared to your peers, as well as, or rather, I should say, especially Chesapeake Public School. Because we heard loud and clear last time, got to be Chesapeake. We got to be higher than Chesapeake. Paula, go get the information from Chesapeake. We got to be better than they are. So we got that data. And then, three, to develop strategies, including updating your structure to see what it needed to be in light of the market findings that we met, to make sure that you're ahead of your peers in the area, especially Chesapeake Public Schools. So we did hear your message. So basically, our timeline was, after we met in July, we went to do the work on the Compensation Program. And we started with project initiation and developing a methodology, collecting the data, and analyzing the data. And we do a lot of analysis, as well as quality control, to make sure that our models are perfect. And now, the last two months, November, part of December, we spent a lot of time thinking through, after analysis, what our recommendations want to be, and that's why we're here today. In that process, we looked at different directions for change. We created different models of pay scales to see what would work for both the teachers and the Unified Pay Scale. We looked at criteria for employee placement. We estimated costs, so you'll not just see our recommendations, but you'll see costs, as well as different ways to implement the pay scale. You'll see that today. So, let's focus now just on the Unified Pay Scale. I'll give you a minute on, a couple minutes on the process and methodology. So we started by identifying the competitive markets, and luckily, we had that one. I left town last time. You told us who your competitive markets are. Then we selected survey sources. We use three main sources for this type of work in our organization, Pay Factors, Comp Analyst, and the Economic Research Institute. We've been using those surveys for many, many years. They're reliable, they're validated, they're consistent, they're updated all the time, and we own it. This is a subscription series that Siegel purchases. Then we match, we match the two, we match what your positions look like, and we match how that looks compared to Virginia Beaches. So we're making sure that we're looking at apples and oranges. At the same time, we determine any market data adjustments we need to make. So for instance, say our accountant also supervises individuals, and the other matches don't, so we would just discount that to take into consideration that one is supervising and the others was not. We validate these market matches. Ms. Wood and Ms. Woodhouse have looked at, did we pick the right matches? Were they good matches, or perhaps we didn't understand your job as well as we might have? So we go through that process, we validate it, and then we analyze the variances. In fact, how does what you're paying your jobs ranges, how does that compare to what the market does? So here is, and they laughed at me when I said this, this is how the sausage is made. This is what goes into this. So, the published survey data is that I just told you about, that we picked, ERI, Comp Analyst, and Pay Factors. The comparison markets were the ones you told us, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Newport News, Chesterfield, Prince Williams Public Schools, as well as the City of Virginia Beach and the City of Chesapeake. And that's, of course, for the non-teaching jobs with the two cities. For the exempt positions, when we pulled the survey data, we looked at all organizations and in the state of Virginia. When we looked at the non-exempt positions, however, we focused on Virginia Beach and a 30-mile radius around Virginia Beach, because at that level, people really aren't commuting very much. So these are the non-exempt jobs. And so we had two different markets that we were looking at. Geographical differences, so you might have been saying, it's a little bit more costly to live in Prince William than it is to live in Virginia Beach, and we discovered that that cost of labor differential was about 15%. So we discounted, based on the geographical differential, that 15%, and the same for Chesterfield, although that was only 2%. The rest of them were essentially within a half percent or so of the cost of labor in Virginia Beach. So as I said, we looked at the, any adjustments that we needed to make for the scope of the job. We aged the data, so all the data we had was aged till January 1, just a couple weeks now, 2023, so that everybody's in the same playing field. Now, the weighting's a little interesting, little different. So, as mentioned, we collected data from your peers, and we also use the published data. For the jobs that we compared most to general industry, we weighted the data on the published surveys, 75% and 25% for the peer data. And then the opposite, where they were more instructional-based, we weighted that data 75%, and the other data just 25%. And it was pretty easy to see, and there's some, of course, you'll see, where it was 100%, just peer data, because it was all instructional. All right. So, the employee groups, we wound up, this was very good, if we do say so ourselves, out of the jobs that you had, you had 300 out of the jobs that you had, you had three hundred and seventy positions, we were able to collect data for a hundred and seventy-two benchmark jobs. Now, benchmark jobs are those that are easy to compare in the marketplace, that many similar organizations will have them as well. So they're not hybrid jobs, not like somebody who's a media specialist and an administrative assistant. I just made that up. I saw it in another client. But jobs that are easy to measure, that are comparable to yours, that you can find in the data from peers and/or the published data without too much trouble. So pretty clean and relatively easy to match. Our published data, by the way, gives it at a number of levels, say, Level 1, 2, 3, 4. So we also look to make sure we're matching at that rate level, and we never do it based on title alone. We are looking at the description of the job in each of those published sources. So we got forty-six percent of your, I think that's a six. I've looked at it seventy-two times, but with glasses on. Forty-six percent, and even better, eighty-two percent of your workforce. So eighty-two percent of all of your employees were covered by this study in the Unified Pay Scale. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Michael, who's going to give you an overview of what we found.
All right, so next, we're gonna take a look at our market assessment findings for the Unified Scale. For this assessment, we were comparing Virginia Beach's midpoints to the market median. So looking at the midpoint of the range for any given benchmark position and comparing that to the median of the market. And the median of the market is that fiftieth percentile. It is really the midpoint of the market. So any data reported from one of our sources, it is half, half the data reported was less than that, and then half was above it. So it is the middle of the market. And so in comparing those one hundred and seventy-two benchmark jobs to the market medians, overall, Virginia Beach is a hundred and four percent of that market. We also looked at a competitive range around the market median that was really our baseline for is a job competitive or not. And so that, that range of ninety-five to one oh five percent of the median, when we look at that range and we look at benchmark jobs, fifty percent of those were above that, that competitive range. Another thirty-nine percent are within the competitive range, and then eleven percent of benchmark jobs below that competitive range. And then we looked at it by job family. And so looking at job families as a whole, again, those midpoints compared to the market median. This is part one of two slides. What we found is the majority of job families are, in aggregate, competitive with the market. Bus assistants are the one job family that is below the competitive range. And then, as I flip to the next slide to show the other job families, you'll see, as you move across, it's showing job families that are more competitive or above the competitive range, with our bus drivers there on the, on the right, furthest above market. So this was looking at job families as a whole. But do keep in mind, individual positions within these families may vary. So not every job is competitive with the market, but as a whole, that job family is competitive. And so next, we're gonna be, we're gonna go through our recommendations based on the market assessment findings. We did group these into three phases. And so our first phase and our first recommendation is to focus on priority positions. And we labeled these as priority positions because we often see high vacancy rates for these positions. Recruitment and retention have been an issue or have been difficult for these positions. They are lower in the wage scale, so they do compete with minimum wage or that fifteen-dollar-an-hour starting rate that we're seeing. And so these priority positions are the bus assistants, the custodians, and the cafeteria assistants. And so what we're recommending to facilitate that recruitment and retention and to be more competitive with those starting rates that we're seeing in the market, we're recommending that the four out of the five positions you see on the screen move up two grades, that custodian three at the bottom move up one grade. And so you'll see here the current grade minimums, where they currently are, what we're recommending. And the goal here is, again, to be more competitive with those starting rates that we're seeing in the general industry. And so these are just the benchmark jobs that we looked at and the impact of those and moving them up those two grades from an employee impact standpoint. They're expected to see anywhere from seven to fifteen percent of an increase to their current salary. And then also looking at non-benchmark positions that are impacted by these changes. And so although these are non-benchmark positions, we look at career ladders, we look at other jobs within the family. And we saw that by moving those other benchmark jobs up, these jobs are also impacted. We wanna maintain internal equity and alignment within the salary structure. And so that's why we're recommending for these four jobs you see here to also move those up. And the, and an employee would expect to see anywhere from seven to fifteen percent. And then we have Phase Two Recommendations, and that is excluding the priority positions, other benchmark jobs, and their non-benchmark jobs that are impacted by them, to adjust those so that they're more competitive with the market. So excluding those priority positions we were just talking about, there's an additional twelve benchmark jobs that were found to be below market. And then an additional seven non-benchmark positions that are impacted by the recommended changes that we have for those benchmark jobs. And so what we have shown on the screen here is an example of the, the changes or the impact. Well, this is actually, sorry. This is Phase Three of our recommendations, and that is to take a look at the current structure as a whole and redesign it. So what we have here is a current structure. We're showing a grade ten and years, those years of service steps from zero to thirty. So what they currently are, what those percent differences are between each step. So as someone moves from step two to three, what type of increase would they expect to receive in moving to that next step? And then in the structure redesign, so in the current step, in the current structure, you'll see those step increments are not consistent. And so what we're recommending in the structure redesign in Phase Three is to smooth out those step increments so that they're consistent throughout the structure. We're not changing any, we're not changing the minimums or the maximums of the range, but really what we're doing is smoothing out those differentials so that as an employee moves up from one step to the next, they're receiving the same or a consistent increase. All right, and to summarize the three phases we just walked through, Phase One is where we have those high vacancy positions, where we're seeing recruitment and retention issues. And so that is those bus assistants, the food service folks, and these custodians. Phase Two is to address those other positions, those other benchmark and non-benchmark positions that were found to be below market. And then Phase Three is redesigning the scale. And so next, we're gonna look at the cost thing. This is also broken out by phase. So Phase One, those priority positions we spoke of, there's nine hundred and fifty-three employees who are impacted by those recommendations. Employees would expect to receive, on average, a twenty-nine-hundred-dollar increase or fourteen percent. That total cost, inclusive of benefits, is about three-point-six million to move them up in the structure and make those changes. Phase Two, those other benchmark jobs below market, sixty-three employees are impacted by those changes, and that total cost is about three hundred thousand. And then Phase Three, redesigning the structure. That does impact four thousand four hundred and forty-four employees. Five, it's going to cost roughly thirteen million to redesign that structure and get employees to those new rates, based on smoothing out those increments between steps. Also, the costs above do not include any step increase or an across-the-board increase that's planned for next year. These are just to make the, the changes to the current structure and where employees, employees currently are. And so now I'm gonna turn it back over to Paula to introduce the teacher pay scale assessment.
Thank you, Michael. So if you don't mind, I wanna go back to, I guess this microphone's gonna go up and down, up and down. So I just wanna bring up one thing in the scale that Michael just presented so well. These phases do not equal years. So Phase One isn't Year One, Phase Two isn't Year Two, and so forth. You can do all three of them at one time or two of them at one time, because the biggest cost comes from the last year. So you might easily choose to do the first two. You know, in one year, you might choose to do, because it's not huge, all three of it in one year. The other thing to note is that those three priority positions that we talked about, that represent over twenty percent of your workforce. It's only three positions, and you've got a lot of oneses and twoseses, but these are a big bulk of your workforce. So back to the teachers. I won't repeat the goals, but it was the same bottom line. Compare us to Chesapeake and make us good. Methodology. So as we said, these were the school systems that the board selected to be the peers. We adjusted them. I wanna remind you about that, the geographical adjustments. And you can see how these school systems compare to the others. Because the size of Prince William, where they're located and the geographical difference, we, as you can see, modified it, you know, gave it a discount of the fifteen percent. But you'll also see coming into it that we will show you data with and without Prince William County. I know you wanted them in, but we put it in as well as excluding, because they're essentially an outlier, which you'll see quickly. So I'm gonna turn this back over to Michael for the finding.
All right, so for the teacher scale assessment, where we started was looking at the starting rates by degree lane. And so what we found here is Virginia Beach is number one in comparison to all the peers for those entry rates. So entry rates for bachelors, masters, masters plus thirty, and doctoral. Ranked number one. Second is Chesapeake. Newport News is third, Norfolk fourth, Chesterfield and Prince William, five and six. Do you wanna note that the Chesterfield and Prince William data in this slide and then also in future slides has been geographically adjusted, so just keep that in mind. And so moving on from starting rates, looking at other, we looked at other years of service milestones. So five years, ten years, fifteen years. And again, looked at each one of those rates in comparison to your peers. Where do you rank? And so you can see the entry rates is number one, but as we move up through the structure at different years, that ranking drops. So by year five, ranked number three, behind Chesapeake and Prince William. Year ten to, to rank five, year fifteen to rank six. So as you move further into the structure, Virginia Beach's rates are further behind its peers. So at the bottom here, we have a comparison to all of the peers, comparison to the market excluding Prince William, and then a direct comparison to Chesapeake. So really what we found, and this is looking at just the bachelor's lane, but what we found is the biggest concern is really in those, the ten-to-twenty range is where you're furthest behind market. And when we looked at the other degree lanes, and especially the master's degree lane, there's, there's the same theme. There's not many drastic changes to how you compare to your peers at the other degree lanes. And so what we have here is a, a graph to show kind of what we had on the previous slide. So in that, that thicker dotted navy blue line, that is your current structure. In the lighter blue dotted line, that's Chesapeake's. And then you have Prince William, which is that really steep sloped line there at the top. Norfolk is in green, Newport News purple, and Chesterfield in orange. And so these are current, this is Virginia Beach's current structure in comparison to those peers. And you'll see a lot of the, the slopes for the other, your peer structures. That slope of that line is quite a bit steeper, especially in that zero-to-fifteen-year range. And we'll take a look at why that is in just a second. Well, this, here we are. This, yeah, this is showing what, so similar to the, what we were just talking about for the Unified Scale in smoothing out those step increments. So again, we were looking at step increments and years, or those years of experience increments throughout the structure. And when we break that down, what we found was, and we put it into buckets, Virginia Beach, those percent increments between steps are considerably, considerably lower than your peers, especially in that zero-to-fifteen-year range. Do you wanna note, Chesapeake, they have that consistent one-and-a-half-percent increase. That is something that they just implemented this past year. And so you'll see in our recommendations that, you know, we're trying to, to change those step increments so that we can be more competitive, because changing those increments at the beginning of the structure really have a significant compounding effect throughout the structure and will really impact those longer-term teachers as well. So overall, for the, the teacher assessment, your entry rates are competitive. They're ranked number one. Those percent increases between years of experience, they're low and below market in that zero-to-fifteen-year range. They are a little bit higher than, or more than competitive with some of your peers in the sixteen-to-thirty range. But really, the concern is, if we can correct the beginning of the structure, it will impact the, everybody throughout, especially those longer-term teachers. So from a market competitiveness standpoint, we have two comparisons. Ones to the overall peer average excluding Prince William. So when we look at that overall average, Virginia Beach currently is competitive from that zero-to-five-year mark and not competitive after the five-year mark, being ranked number three or lower. And then when we compare directly to Chesapeake, we do have a higher entry rate for now. But after that one year, after the first year, you are below Chesapeake, and as you move throughout the structure, anywhere from five to fifteen percent lower. And so I am going to pass it back to Paula to go through our, we have three pay scale options. So I'll let Paula take you through those.
All right, options, options, options. So Option One is to create a design of your scale that has one-and-a-half percent in between each step. So now there's a variety. You can, you can see on the, on the left side, you know, from point five, you've got a two-point-one, one-point-three throughout to make it even, one-point-five throughout. This option helps you meet your goal to beat out Chesapeake. And it'll be between point two and point nine percent, depending on the degree and the step. This makes you rank number one among your peers, including Chesapeake, with the exception of Prince William. However, it does come with a price tag, which we'll look at shortly. You'll see here, the green on the bottom is all how much higher you are on Chesapeake's scale than Option One. You can see in the black that you're... You can see in the black that you're higher than your peers, but just a little bit higher than Chesapeake, but higher than Chesapeake. And if you, and if we exclude Prince William, you can see that the ranking goes up so that you are number one, looking at that top line all across the board. As a graph, it looks like this. You're the heavy dark blue line that's broken up, like, yeah, I guess, broken line. And Chesapeake is right below you in the light blue. The steep slope, of course, is Prince William. And then below that are Newport News, Norfolk, and Chesterfield. So, this is option one, putting you above Chesapeake. Option two is the second option, and what we're saying here is instead of making it one and a half percent across all of the steps, we go one and a quarter percent for zero to fifteen. And then at step sixteen, do one and a half percent between steps. This is more affordable than option one. It's above the peer market, but it doesn't really meet your project goal and you're behind Chesapeake by one-point-six to three-point-one. And this has you ranking number two rather than number one among your peers, excluding Prince William and below Chesapeake. So, you're not meeting your goal in that way. And you can look at it here very clearly with the red at each of the steps at the bachelor's level rank. So, you start out being, you know, pretty good, high, but then in a couple of years, you're behind already. The ranking goes up, though, when you exclude Prince William, and that's to ranking of two across the board. And looking at it graphically, you can see here that you are ahead of Newport News, Norfolk, and Chesterfield. But you're a little bit behind Chesapeake. You can see that the light blue broken dotted line is ahead. Option three, which is your least costly option, depending on the budget possibilities. And here, we're cutting it down a little bit further so that in years zero to fifteen, there's one percent between steps. So, the original option one had one and a half percent. For zero to fifteen, we're down to one percent and sixteen plus, one and a half percent between steps. Does not meet the project goal, but still a viable option. You're behind Chesapeake and Newport News. You rank number three among your peers. Salaries, however, are four to seven percent below Chesapeake salaries, depending on year and degree lane. And, but one thing I want to point out is even though the percentage is below at those higher levels, the individual will still receive a higher increase because of the compounding in the years zero, one to fifteen. So, nobody's losing money here. And as you can see in all of them, they show the increases in option one and two, that one, two, and three that employees will receive. So, here, going back to the bottom line, literally the bottom line, you see Virginia Beach ahead of Chesapeake at entry rate, but then falling behind and falling behind, I'd say somewhat significantly, you know, with that minus point four, minus four-point-one, minus six-point-seven, and so forth. That's putting you behind Chesapeake. Your ranking, though, includes when we take out Prince William, but you can still, let's see, one at entry and then two and three. So, here, option three, you can see the line, that dotted blue line again is Chesapeake. And you can see Chesapeake is quite a bit higher than the rest of them excluding Prince William, which is the steep one over there. Now, here, we're not looking at school systems anymore, other than Virginia Beach and Chesapeake. And we're looking at the three options. And what does that look like graphically? So, option one is that dark, dark lavender one that's on the top. Option two is the green one that's a little bit lower. Option three is the purplish darker lavender one that you can see. And the bigger choppy one that's supposed to be dark blue, but somehow it doesn't look dark blue to me right here, is the current. So, you can see how behind you are and how you're moving up for options one, two, and three as recommended, with option one being the highest and above Chesapeake. That has been a refrain, hasn't it, Chesapeake, Chesapeake, yes? So, I am going to turn this back to Michael, who's going to talk about the employee impact and cost implications.
All right. So, we did want to take you through a few examples of how these changes and what we're recommending under each one of the options, how that impacts teachers in the scale. And so what we have on the screen is your current step rates from years zero to thirty. And then what those teacher scale options one, two, and three would look like. And so what it's showing is really, it's a dollar increase and the percent increase between the current step and the recommended scale for each one of the options. So, under option one, employees would expect to receive anywhere from one to fifteen percent of an increase to their base salary. Option two, anywhere from one to eleven percent. And then under option three, anywhere from one to seven percent. So, you'll see some of those dollar amounts, too, are quite significant, especially under option one. We also looked at where are the majority of employees currently on the step scale? Fifty-five percent of those are in the zero to fifteen-year range. Another thirty-nine percent in that sixteen to thirty year, and then six percent thirty-one-plus years. And then that table at the bottom that you can see on your screen, looking at years of experience buckets. How many employees are in that group? And the percent increase to their current salary, they would expect to receive under the three options that we have. Do keep in mind that the distribution and the information we have here as far as where employees currently are and especially the number of employees, this is as of beginning of August. So, the census, when we were provided with the information, all of this and the current employee distribution is as of August eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. All right. And then what we have here is, again, a few examples. For this example, we have an employee who's currently on step ten. Next year, will be moving to step eleven due to their years of experience increase. So, under option one, I'll walk through the phases that we have here, but it's the same for options one, two, and three. Currently on step ten, you can see the rate there. You can see what their new step ten rate is, roughly a fifty-eight-hundred-dollar increase or an eleven percent increase. And then moving them to that step eleven next year, an additional nine-hundred dollars. So, in total, a twelve-point-four percent increase under that option one for someone who's on step ten and moving to eleven. Under option two, in that same scenario, it's about a nine and a half percent increase or roughly five thousand dollars. And then option three, six-point-five percent. And then to show another example of someone who is on step twenty, moving to twenty-one, again, same process. And under these three options, option one, fourteen percent increase to current base salary. Option two, almost ten percent increase. And then option three, almost a six percent increase. All right. So, let's take a look at the cost thing. Just want to revisit the pros and cons of each one of the options. Option one is the only option that does meet our project goal of being ahead of Chesapeake. We would exceed Chesapeake by point-two to point-nine percent, depending on the year and the degree lane. But you would be ranked number one excluding Prince William. It is the most costly option at roughly thirty-eight million. Option two, it will put you above your overall market peer average, you know, the overall market peer average excluding Prince William by roughly two-point-four to six-point-seven percent. It is more affordable than option one, but it doesn't put you ahead of Chesapeake. You would be below Chesapeake by about one-point-five to three percent and ranked number two when you exclude Prince William. And the cost for that is about twenty-seven million. And then we have option three, which is the least costly. It doesn't meet our project goal of being ahead of Chesapeake. And you'll actually be ranked number three, third, just behind Newport News as well, under the option three structure. And anywhere from four to seven percent below Chesapeake overall. And so that costs sixteen-point-two million. All right. So, for implementation, we have three different approaches. The first approach would be to implement option one in the first year. So, this would include moving all of the step increments up to that one and a half percent consistent increase. You'd be, your structure design would be aligned with Chesapeake and due to the higher entry rate just above Chesapeake throughout the structure. This also includes moving teachers up a step for their years of experience. And so that is that thirty-eight-point-three we're just looking at on the previous slide. The other two approaches that we have is doing a two-year phase in. And so in that first year, what we would recommend if approach number one is, isn't, an option, is to implement the option two structure in year one with a commitment to move to the option one structure in year two. So, it's adjusting year zero to fifteen to that one and a quarter percent. And years sixteen to forty-three, the one and a half, also moving teachers up a step. So, the year one cost is roughly twenty-seven million. And then in year two, getting those, those steps for years, years zero to fifteen up to the one-point-five. And also what this does include in year two, it is a little more expensive than in year two because teachers are going to be moving up another step for experience. And so that additional cost is also added on in year two, which is roughly five-point-eight million. And then the third implementation approach is similar layout to number two, but in, instead of implementing that option two structure in year one, you would implement the option three structure. So, the difference there is in year zero to fifteen, going with that one percent instead of the one and the quarter. So, that's the sixteen-point-two million in year one. And then in year two, get, moving every, moving to the option one structure we talked about and moving teachers up again for their, the years of service. And that number in year two is twenty-seven-point-nine million. All right. And I'm going to pass it back to Paula.
Last slide, I promise. And then we're looking forward to taking your questions. So, this is just a summary. On the unified scale, we've got phases one, two, and three, which can all be done at the same time, not crazy costly. We focused on the three priority positions because they're low-paid and Virginia Beach has increased their salaries, they're starting salaries to fifteen dollars an hour. I know the state minimum wage is going up pretty soon. And you have issues recruiting and retaining employees at this level anyway. You do not have consistent increases up and down the scale, so we proposed that at one-point-three percent rather than, by the way, the one-point-five percent that we proposed for the teachers. And let's look at the summary of the teachers. We've got the options that we talked about, the three different ways to approach it. Approach one was just bite the bullet and do it. Just put it in thirty million and change, thirty-eight million and change, including benefits. Approach two is forty-four million dollars because of the fact that you're implementing over two years and it compounds on top of the increase. Approach number three, same thing. It's just the way that it's implemented. And the, doing it all at once helps with the implementation cost over the longer term. And it achieves your goals. If you go with option one, and I think we're sounding like a broken record and we apologize. Uh-oh, Mrs. Rice saying yes to you. You know, that's the only way you can meet your goal. Two-year phase options are not quite the same, but in all scenarios, by the way that we proposed to you, it assumes not increasing the entry rate. And that's because we know that that's something the board does every year is to increase the salary for entry-level teachers. And it's something we discussed with Mrs. Woodhouse and Ms. Wood. We have some options, but we knew that that's the school board's decision to make. So, we are done now and we thank you for your patience and your attention. And we are open to any questions that you might have.
Okay. So, we'll start with Mrs. Franklin and then thank you both for the presentation.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you. All right. So, I do want to ask just a few questions about, you had listed that on slide nine, excluding priority positions, an additional twelve benchmark positions, eight percent are below the competitive market range. When I'm looking at this, we've got the three priority positions that we've discussed. What are, because I'm only getting five other based on slide six or page six, slide eleven. What were the other twelve benchmark positions that we have not addressed outside of the priority positions? Because I only see mechanical directors, technology, supply, and clinic assistants. What were the other seven that we are not addressing?
Yeah, that's likely because of just the job title itself. So, like custodians, for example, you have a variety of just, it's the same level custodian, but you call it, it's titled something slightly different.
Okay. So, it could be a subcategory, is what you're saying. Yeah.
Right. Yes, exactly.
Gotcha.
Right. So, I believe in the slide that we were showing where it just says custodian one, there may be like three or four job titles for the custodian one. They just call them.
By any chance, do you, do you, not right now, but could you give us information on the specific categories of the twelve positions that you were referring to?
So, in truth, the reason we did not present that in public frankly is because, sorry, is because some of them are single incumbents and we wanted to keep it private. And that is certainly something that HR has and can be shared with you. Yeah, just, we didn't want it being a personnel issue out in public.
And then my other question is, we have heard from OTs and PTs, the occupational therapists and physical therapists. And I know that right now we are contracting some of those positions out because they're hard. And I see, thank you, Ms. Woodhouse. But, so when you were doing your study, did you look at only the ones that are currently FTEs? Or did you also look at the pay of the contracted employees as well in those positions?
We did not look at the contractor pay. We did, however, look outside the school system for OTs and PTs because you're competing with the private sector and other organizations as well.
Okay. So, the contract, the people that we're contracting right now were not included in this study. Okay. That's, I did have a question about that. I think that's it.
Did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to add exactly what you just indicated. Because they did look at the positions in terms of comparison with other school divisions as well as outside marketing positions, our positions included those in a FTE allocation. So, any outsourced positions would not be looked at, but it also still would have been compared as they looked at school-based information and outside other organizations.
Yeah, I just didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that the comparison was based on not the contracted plus. So, it was, you know, we had a true metric here instead, instead of something that we're contracting. Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few questions. Um, my first question is about benefits. Benefits were not included in this, correct?
Right.
Okay, so we just recently put a lot of money into our benefits, making our benefits package much better because we knew that we were not competitive in that area. Um, so I'm wondering if there's a way to overlap what we've done with benefits, because we did a couple of years ago, had a market comparison with, um, our competing school districts on our benefits plan, and, you know, I know that's something that Ms. Woodhouse, I believe that Mr. Mira had done, I don't remember, um, how, how long ago that was.
Well, I can, uh, speak to that. You're absolutely correct. Um, we had, through our benefits office, through budget, um, have a proposal presented, and I can't remember the vendor offhand, I see Crystal walking up here, where we did take a com- look at and compare, um, what our employees paid out-of-pocket costs for benefits, and if, if I'm correct, it, you put towards that, um, a little to the upwards of eight million dollars, um, to reduce those premium costs, which our employees will see in their January paychecks.
Right. And, yeah, so I, I guess as we're, as we're contemplating what to do here and, and going through budget season, I think it would be helpful if we could adjust those numbers and see where we fit now compared to our, um, sister schools around the areas, is that going to be possible for us to get that information?
You're saying to do look at benefits again and make that comparison?
Yeah.
We can certainly work with our third-party consultant to do that.
Okay. Um, thank you. And then, uh, something else, I think it was, it was pointed out in the presentation, but I want to highlight it, we do still have a number of positions that are going to be below that state required minimum wage of fifteen dollars that we are going to have to prioritize. I assume we'll be getting so, a presentation on that, or that information in, in our budget, um, upcoming budget conversations about how much it's going to cost for us to do that, since we will have to prioritize it.
Yes, ma'am. And actually, if you take a look in the presentation, um, the first proposal was focused on those individuals who were under fifteen dollars. By moving them up the two pay scales that was suggested, it would get them at a starting rate a little above fourteen, which would definitely put us on path of meeting the requirements of fifteen dollars, actually a little ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, um, my last question is about slides ten, eleven, and twelve, if you want to go there to reference it.
I can't see the numbers.
It's heading in the wrong direction.
Is that ten?
That's twenty-five.
Actually, it's not the same numbers because, um, it just includes everything. Go forward.
It's the market assessment findings, it's toward the beginning?
On there, yes.
It's one of the fir- uh, okay. Yeah, so starting there, so, uh, for the unified pay scale, so I just want to be sure I understand it. So the fifty percent above competitive range, so we are above the competitive range for fifty percent of our positions on the unified pay scale, is that how I'm reading that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then to, on the next slide, on slide eleven, um, okay, so this red box, I don't understand the ninety-five to a hundred and five percent, can you explain that to me?
Yes, yes. Um, uh, when you look at market, you don't just look at one number, like a hundred percent, because it's never going to be totally on target at seven cents or whatever. It's always between a little bit and a little bit above and a little bit below, is how we measure what market is. And you're looking at ninety-five to a hundred and five, which is what we traditionally look at in, um, public schools and public sector. Higher ed is a little wider, but when you're defining your market, it's still pretty narrow, but not exactly one number.
Okay, so for example, it says, uh, principals are at a hundred percent of the range, so am I looking at this correctly, that anything in that red box is at the median for market?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Right. Um, yes, so any of those job categories that are within that box are within the competitive range of the market median. If you were right at that exact rate of the market median, that would be a hundred percent, but we have that range.
Okay.
Um, I do want to clarify, too, on the previous slide, that fifty percent of jobs above, it is just benchmark positions. So of the jobs that we market priced, half of them were above that competitive range.
Okay. And then so, on slide twelve, where it's showing, for example, um, coordinator instruction, it says a hundred and nine percent, that means that there, anything over the one hundred and five percent line, they would be above market salary, is that correct?
Right, so, so it's, it's saying really that, that job family as a whole, um, all of the benchmark positions that we reviewed in that job family, overall, are, what was it, a hundred and nine percent?
Yeah.
Um, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mrs. Rice? So, good. Nope, sorry. If you could refresh my memory, sticking to these same two charts, uh, is, is this with or without Prince William?
Um, this is...
It, it is with Prince William.
But adjusted, but adjusted.
Included, but, and adjusted, okay.
Adjusted with the decrease of the fifteen percent.
And I would say with, with that geographic differential applied to like the unified assessment, um, Prince William wasn't seen as much of an outlier as what we were really seeing with the teacher scale, where you could see on some of those graphs, they were really off the charts. Um, there was more consistency, it wasn't viewed as much of an, an outlier for the unified
Just checking on anybody else here. While we're waiting to see if more questions arise, mine's more a comment, but, um, I mean, this was a long time coming, so I think, okay, this was anticipated, and I, I certainly see, moving forward, I would suspect that this involves a lot of community conversation, you know? So, Mrs., Ms. Owens.
Let me do it. Okay, thank you. This might be more of a comment than question unless you all have information, um, on it. With the, uh, raising of minimum wage overall statewide, and then our proposed, uh, kind of jumping ahead of it, we're going to have to do it either, either way, do we have any, anything that's moving these positions, these families, because there's families behind these positions, ahead of where they were, like, right now, I don't know, family of three at these rates are probably, uh, receiving food stamps or benefits, when we adjust to bring it just above the new minimum wage, are we keeping them at these poverty levels? Is that, um...
I do not know the answer to that question, and that is something to take a look at.
Okay.
I mean, you could say, why are we bringing them to fourteen oh six and not more? I'm sorry.
Right.
Um, you might say, I mean, and that is data, that can be looked at, but you might say then, to follow your train, why are we taking them to fourteen oh six and not fifteen? And that was something we thought would be very difficult to do in the short term, because of, number one, the cost, and, number two, we thought it would be competitive, and number three, because then it really compresses the rest of the positions that are nearby, and then that, you know, dominoes. So we thought that's something that could be studied over the next year and figure out how to do it. Now, I know the state's minimum wage doesn't go into effect, I think it's until January twenty twenty-six, which isn't, of course, to say that you can't do it earlier, which is what I think you're thinking, um, but it does have an impact.
Okay. And yeah, I, I think you were following my kind of train of thought, and I understand, obviously, if we had all the money, that we would pay all the, pay everybody much more, but, um, when we're looking at our philosophy and, uh, pay scale, I think it's maybe just worth having that discussion, how many positions in our district do we want to have paid at poverty rate, rates, poverty wages for those families where they're still going to need public assistance to work for us?
And, and is that still true, given the move that we just made?
Right, and would it still be true?
I don't know that, yeah, no, that's worth looking at.
Happy idea, okay, thank you.
Well, all I can say is you know where to find us. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact Ms. Wood or Ms. Woodhouse, and we're more than delighted to get on a Zoom or talk to you, or anything we can do to be helpful. Uh, Mike and I appreciate your patience in waiting for this and the fact that you were willing to do it. I always think it's a big step, when organizations like put a magnifying glass on their comp philosophy and, and what their pay plan is, and, um, I applaud you all for doing that.
And before you leave the podium, I think it's a fair question for the superintendent, wha- what do you envision for this new school board and administration as, as next steps?
Well, you, so you've seen a couple of things. One, we have, um, a, another follow-on in the new year compensation update workshop, where I really envision a conversation with the school board about, okay, what do we do with this as we prepare the estimate of needs? And so it's really, I think, incumbent upon both, those of you who are sitting on the board now, and those who are going to be sitting on the board to be thinking about, what does this mean, asking the kinds of questions that Ms. Owens just asked, and, and be prepared to provide some direction to administration on where you want to go. That will happen concurrent to getting better direction from the state, um, and better projections from the city about new revenues, because obviously, a lot of this is predicated upon the revenue picture. And, and so, um, you know, that, we, we typically begin to get, uh, better projections around the end of this month from the state, and then early in the new year from the city. And so those help us guide our, um, our decision-making there. I will say, um, Ms. Owens, specifically to your question, that's probably also an additional compensation philosophy conversation, right? Because, um, that's not a, that's not an analysis-driven conversation, right? So what, what the analysis tells you is, if you take these steps, you'll be at market, you'll be in the market for these positions. And, uh, what it doesn't do is say, is that enough, um, for the, for the positions that you're thinking about, and the families that you're thinking about, but that's part of the compensation discussion that would then drive a different kind of, um, analysis than, than a market analysis, so. But we'll look forward to that. You saw it in the forecast, that we do have another compensation update coming. Between here and there, I think it's, it's an opportunity for those community conversations about where we should, uh, be going with this information, and certainly, uh, we'll look forward to that conversation.
And thank you for the reminder for the record, it is noted for January twenty-fourth, the compensation update. So I appreciated that reminder, Dr. Spence.
Thank you very much, and our best wishes for a happy and a healthy year, and happy holidays.
Okay. So that concludes our workshop, and we will be reconvening at six o'clock for the formal meeting in the auditorium.